And your proposals?
I'd rather be happy for deputy if I'm Adam.
It's not yet, is it?
So now have three proposals or that are pretty tangible. Will you just show hands or a paper vote?
No, show hands.
Paper votes.
Oh.
All those that are happy with the show of hands.
Yeah.
Well, there's enough of this.
One, two, three, four, five.
As long as we do it slowly and it creates individual person.
Stentions. Four names or?
Against.
Against.
Against, yeah, I like, I like secret ballots.
Like motion cards by show.
So it's only going to be, it's only going to be one.
This is all we need in sight now, how are we going to?
What?
We should do this elimination, shouldn't we?
Yeah, so if we, if we basically, if we go like.
The lowest, the lowest mark is knocked off.
Okay. All right, so we take it to.
So first then is, so all those who take favour of Adam.
Oh, yeah.
One, two, three, four. Don't you want to use someone?
Well, just wait till he's right first. Let's say it's number one.
One, two, three, four. Uh, oh, you've got a problem with that. Those in favour of Martin. Two.
I think, are we only allowed to vote one?
No, it's a human action, so I feel that's wrong.
No, no, can you?
Oh, what is it?
You vote first, you vote for one person in round one. The person with the lowest number of votes gets knocked out when you vote.
So you can't vote me?
Yeah. All right, what, I make a good time at two o'clock.
So we start again?
Would you go any vote?
Just, just to clarify clear.
Don't mind, I'll have to come out and, but Chairman, uh, we will not add Chairman in this, but I'll withdraw and then it helps. So you're just choosing between two because I'll put my name forward for deputy, although I don't see we need it. So I'm withdrawing my nomination.
So now, so it's, it's just Adam and Paul. So those in favour of Adam. One, two, three, four, those for Paul. What, yeah, okay. Uh, Chairman on this day, Chairman on the council on this day. So that means Adam is elected as chairman.
I abstained.
Everybody has passed the thing I'm saying.
What's yours?
I don't have one.
Shall I come back here, seven?
No, you have to tell me, see, seven. Good to see you laugh. Zaki, you get to press the button.
We share the stupid, the stupid secrets.
I like Adam, no, it's because he was last meeting.
Well, we can actually see it now. It wouldn't possibly.
No. Stay where you are, stay where you are.
It does seem so, we get the time.
Okay, so that was item one. Item two is apologies, is, any apologies?
No, I'd raise a point of order.
Oh, right, okay.
The recording equipment is on the table, not on the recording table.
Okay. All right, I think we're, we're sure, point of order has been raised by councillor Higgy. Councillor Brooks, are you prepared to remove your camera from the table?
No.
Right, uh, colour bar please make note of that. And, um, what we'll do, I would recommend that after the call, we can begin writing the account at some point to discuss camera layout. Uh, item two then is, uh, apologies.
Thank you, Ben.
Are there any apologies? Is anybody here? That should be all this panel, yes, they are all here. So there's no apologies. Uh, declarations of interest, anyone who has declared any, you know, interest, any other interest that you're not reading the book, can do it in the book. So Martin?
Yes, I, I have an interest and you'll have to help me because I've been a bit all over the place. Um, it's a planning matter for cost cutter, but I can't find it at the moment on here. It's because it's in my rows and.
Seven, two. Mister Ratchwanit.
Yeah.
Has rolling shutters.
It's because I live nearby, I'm declaring an interest.
Were you, uh, voting or anything like that?
I will be commenting.
Comment, but no vote.
Well, I didn't make a difference, I just, I'm just commenting, but I need to declare because obviously I raised an objection.
Got it, brilliant, good. Uh, Joyce?
Uh, Mister Hammond, uh, second, six. As we can.
Eighteen months away.
Yeah, as he is a near neighbour and I actually look onto the property, it's across the road from him.
Okay.
I will not speak, I will not talk.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Higgy?
Yeah, um, eleven, two, one, two, one, seven, three, nine, eight, nine.
What's that in?
This, this wasn't a book, book.
What, the third is going to our partnership?
Correct, yes. Uh, normally curious, I have a question for Paul, inviting, um, yeah, to speak.
Okay, any on this side?
Whoops, on the other side?
For all these people over here. Having, Alan, you've got any interest?
No.
Right, okay. Right, uh, item four is election of vice chairman. Uh, this is the election of vice chairman of the committee. Anybody who'd like to be considered vice chairman, nominations, put your hands up.
I'm nominated, Paul.
Right, okay, so Paul nominated by Michael. Martin, you're nominated.
Myself.
Yourself, I said Martin, Brooks is nominated. Uh, we need a second of a call, so which is, uh, Anne. And we've got a second of mine. Nick, thank you. So are we going to do the same again? Would anybody else want to speak?
Yes, I want to. I wanted to be considered as vice chair and I have done it for so long.
Councillor Joyce Lucas is proposed.
Can I second or not?
Yeah, you can, you can. Okay, so, so, so we've got three in the frame. What we'll do, are we going to do, are we going to do the voting thing in the corner? Are we going to do the passive votes or?
No. Well, I guess I do, I want to do, I do see proposals there.
Okay, if anybody else wants to do secret voting or passive votes? No, it needs three councillors to carry that, so that's.
I'll, I'll agree with Anne because it can get a bit complicated.
So Sally Anderson, Anne has set, uh, has set signed ballot. Uh, Martin is, uh, second as well, we need a third councillor, I believe, in the standing orders for that to go ahead, and so a third councillor wants to support it?
Because all we're doing is crossing in the box, it makes it easier.
Well, that's four of them.
Okay, that's why I try.
You did try, didn't you? Well, no. Let's keep chatting now, let's focus on the agenda, because we've got to get through this. So what we'll do, we'll go, we'll go, so one's voting, so if I call out, um, Paul was nominated first, wasn't he?
Yeah.
Uh, so if I call out Paul, if you want to support Paul, then you put your hand up, then you can't vote for anybody else.
It's a knockout, isn't it?
It's a knockout, yes, but, yeah, without the big creatures, as in, the grown adults. Okay, all those in favour of Paul, please raise your hands. So that's one. You can vote for yourself, Paul. Right, so there's two for Paul. Nine, two. That's good. So Martin, all those in favour of Martin, raise your hands. One, two. Sorry. There's got, well, that's a big one, isn't it? Two.
Well, that comes when we come to the knockouts, doesn't it?
And all those in favour of, well, Joyce only gets two. All those in favour of Joyce, raise your hands. One, two. Chairman has a vote, yeah, I have three. Now, because we've got a tie in second place, and neither of them have attained a minimum majority, but they've both changed, achieved the same, that says to me that Joyce is possibly going to be deputy chairman on that.
What you were doing, my living there, can't.
Oh, do I? What to do, what do we join though?
Yeah, just.
I'm not, sorry Chairman, I'm not sure you're entitled to casting votes on this because we had this once come up with, and we got the book out with, um, Alps here. On when it comes to appointments and co-options, you're not allowed to. I, I may be wrong, but I'm just remembering back to when we had a quick bubble about.
The six coming, the six.
And it's elimination by overall majority.
The seven.
But to save the fuss.
Had seven votes.
Adam, to save the fuss, I'll pull it up again because it's nonsense. We don't really need a deputy chair, we're going to appoint. Yeah, that's fine, we're just, it just saves the nonsense.
Fine, then, fine, if Martin's pulling out, then Martin goes as chairman then, and we bring it again with Paul and myself, uh, Paul and Joyce in the frame, okay? Is everybody happy for them, you've got a choice, we've made that decision now. Uh, because of the casting vote scenario, because I can't decide between those two. So what we'll do is we'll start again, there's now two horses in the race, we'll start with Paul. All those in favour of Paul, please raise your hand. Right, one, two, three.
No, now they're not.
One, two, three. Right, that's four, got three. All those in favour of Joyce, right. One, two, three. Martin?
I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining? That leaves it down to casting votes, it falls down to the chairman then, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Well, we won't argue, but I'm sure you're not supposed to on appointments, but.
Well, did you say, if you're going to sit there?
It's that complicated.
We're not going to use casting vote, or not going to vote.
No, if I vote against it, it makes, it makes the gentleman.
So Joyce, councillor Lucas is going to be deputy chairman of the planning department, sorry. That's all, because she's three, she's got this one, what's it been? Uh, so, decision is then that the election of vice chairman is councillor Lucas. Right, item five is to approve the minutes of meeting in the paddies, making it held on Wednesday the seventeenth. Anybody got any comments or objections? I wasn't here, I don't think.
The only people that can vote is Joyce, Nick and Martin.
All right, anybody who has comments or observations? If not, looking for you to accept them, Nick, propose to be accepted, selected by Joyce, all those in favour? Martin, are you in favor? Right, that's three, that's three in favour and four abstaining. So the minutes are.
I leave.
Yeah. Not voting.
Who's not voting? Now, please, we're allowing another election, so. I'm not up there. Uh, that's such fun.
That's why I'm confused.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm confusing with that.
Right, uh, item six, there will be declarations by members in public. There's not any here. So we're going to item seven, which is paddie application, the first one, please, if you can handle this up, is Mister Cooper. Demolition of existing garage block, replacement of detached dwelling, land to south at Wall Crown Street. I'll take it, any comments or observations? If the board member wants to speak first for that area, but otherwise I'll just look for who wants to speak. Anybody? Oh, it's quite, oh, it's very good, right, isn't it?
Starting to play ball.
There'll be a.
The ball's been uploaded, so.
Okay.
Right, I'm actually going to pay the papers, I'm afraid. Has everybody looked on their chance to look at my meetings?
No, excuse me, the men who have not turned in the papers, I've seen that, I've left a few and a half hours, that's the second time they've not given a look.
Is anybody else ever looked, Martin, you haven't looked on one of them?
But I can't, I have no comment on it.
I, I'm, uh, I was here in the paper plant, I come in and do that before the meeting. Oh, that's a word. Oh. Do you want to fight him around to Anne? Because I. There we are, then.
Is this a paper plant, it is.
Oh, you've got one, you need to plan.
I know, I'm just looking to see what's. Just seeing what it is.
Have you seen, have you, have you seen the document?
No.
Oh, so you want the paper plans?
Yes. Yes.
This is good, take ages. You know where, uh, where this block is? Anybody?
It's in the ground. Yes.
I, 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 you know where it is?
Yes.
You know where Crown Street is, yes. These would be up before council before. Uh, before Adam. And we agreed that they should be knocked down. And it was refused at Rockhampton County Council. On what grounds? I have no idea, I can't remember. But there we are.
Chairman, I, I also believe that it came to council either early this year or last year.
Your computer.
And, um. And, and they, they've already asked for the garages to be converted into shops. They have some very nice shop units and that was turned down by Rockhampton County Council, so I'm.
Yes.
I'm not sure what they want to happen with them.
Uh, but it came as a house the first time.
I don't remember that one, that must have been before my time as well.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Can I go out to stand up?
No.
I'm just concerned until we have the actual one-way system, it wouldn't be good to, to build so close to a corner because you need to know what, what's happening about the one-way street. So I would say, I would want it at this time, it might be good later on, but we don't know what's going to be demolished, if that's going to be the one-way street or anything.
No, it's not one-way street. It's a conversation.
Yeah, but it's on a corner, it's on a corner and we don't know how much of that road they're going to have to take to make it a one-way street.
It's closed, then.
That's what I'm saying, yes, South Street is going to be part of the one-way system as far as I know. I don't want anything to happen round there until they know what's going to have to be demolished or not.
I don't think it will have the, the plans to turn South Street and things, whatever it is, um, Mill Street, one way or whatever, it's not going to affect one house there.
This road, this is.
It does seem a disappointment that, that we're going to lose garages, but they're not let, most of them as garages at the moment, so it's. I'd rather see them a house there myself, that's why I didn't make too much comment.
South Street is not wide enough at the moment to take big lorries and things, it is, and the corners and things are just not.
It's, it's not that near the corner though, Anne.
Well, how far is it?
There's another house before them with a hedge.
I'm sorry.
Well, I'm sorry, Joyce.
That's why I do a site duty.
Well, not everybody has the time to do it, Joyce.
Hello?
It's Anne, there's a house on the corner and there's a, there's a beautiful hedge, well, it was a hedge, it came cut a bit and it's full of birds and. So there's quite, you can't actually see it from South Street unless you're ready to look round.
Why was it turned down again?
We don't know, they, they must have given a reason, but I, I didn't look into it.
We just not give them that, but not to cancel. Uh, could, I mean, yes, no, we can, there's nothing to stop the townhouse, as all said, we, uh, at this time, we can't make adjustments because we, uh, we can't access the plans. So I'm telling that, we have got the plans over there. But we've got one set of plans.
Well, can I make a suggestion and obviously the council has to decide? The council has to decide, is the loss, we, we have residents in that area complaining that they're going to lose parking spaces due to the town central improvements.
Yes.
And, um, so if, if the garages are going, yes, they're not currently used for vehicles, but that's another loss of six spaces.
It is.
For residents, but if.
Does the council feel that the demolition of the garage block is the best use or the best thing for that garage block? If they're not being utilized as garages or not being utilized to best their own business, the demolition and the, um, and the replacement of detached dwelling, is that a good use of the land?
Who owns the garages? Mister Cooper.
It's assumed to Mister Cooper, yeah.
And Mister Cooper's obviously holding up because he wants to do something other than garages, which if I owned, I might probably want to do the same.
The garages, so it's obvious.
Yeah, he's tried shops, it's been turned down, so.
Right, um, I would, I would say that in the absence of, um, any, um, because we can't make an informed decision, it occurs to me that this council can't make any decision. Um, except to say that we, uh, are aware of the application, but at this time we, uh, we cannot comment on it. That's all available, we can say.
Can we comment that we are concerned or are concerned about the loss of parking?
We can highlight that, uh, the council want to make sure that this doesn't impact anyway, it doesn't have an impact because of the, any, any one-way system that may be introduced. And also that it isn't impacting to the loss of resident car parking.
Where's his garage?
Well, you've got the plan.
I know there isn't a garage. No, that, that's where they are now, but is neither of those attached?
This is possible, you can't, or whatever, right. So at the moment, I'm going to propose to the chair that we, we pass this back to the council saying that, um, the only comment we can make at this time is in reference to, uh, that, that they be aware of any restrictions on, for, for future improvements, be they one-way or other. And it doesn't impact on resident parking.
Yeah.
We, we can't reject or review the value application as such anyway. Anybody give comments and that, okay?
Yeah.
So that's the proposal for the chair, sent in by councillor Higgy, who is in favour? That's unanimous, so are we able to get?
I'll send them the whole plan.
Oh, right, yeah. Now, the, every, most councillors, in actual fact, went down to the, uh, went down to Willow Stores, which is where they had the guy who owned the shop recently. And the guy went around, rolled the shutter doors to, or rolled the shutters to the shop window. Any comments or observation around that, any concerns? You have, with Martin?
Yeah, and the, the shutters are already there.
Yeah.
And as obviously I declare, as I'm a person who lives there, um, I objected to the shutters because it detracts. It gives a poor, it gives a poor image to the area. Um, but I'm happy for the shutters to remain if the council were to recommend to Rockhampton County Council that they put a, a caveat on that while the shops open, these shutters must be up. Now, because there was one day where half of it was down in daylight. Um, but also we have to bear in mind that Rockhampton County Council has a document, which I haven't been able to find since, but I have mentioned it to council in the past. Which actually says that no shop in the town, and I don't know how that reflects throughout the town, should have shutters on the exterior of their buildings. It's very clear.
Many shops in town have shutters.
I know, but we've disputed that, um, because there's some where they're closed in the daytime. But providing there's a caveat to say that during daylight hours and shop opening, that all the shutters remain up, there's two large ones. Then I, I wouldn't have an issue and nor would some other people who have pointed it out.
Okay, any, any more, certainly, well, some of daylight hours can last a very long time, uh, probably after the shop.
Yeah, well, they're open seven days a week until eleven o'clock at night and tied in the morning, so I'm not particularly amateur. When they shut the shop, they turn all the lights off, so it's not soon.
Right, anybody else got any comments or observations?
No, and rubber shutters are, are all over the west end anyway. I know that the light, light warning crashes and.
So whereas this accepted, the rubber shutters do make the place a little bit like, um.
Yeah.
You know, less than attractive, they are a necessary evil in this area.
Absolutely.
So, so the council, um, are, uh, are prepared to acknowledge that the rubber shutters are a necessary evil. And that a caveat is that, uh, that the business areas when they're open, that the shutters really should be, all of them should be up.
Yes.
Everybody happy with that? So that's the proposal for Martin, I've turned it on, right?
That's fine, yes, we've.
Seconded by each, uh, Anne. All those in favour? That's unanimous as well then.
That's right, that's set and we're not.
Read then, paddie application, this is remedial work to the car park ground, you've got a white line. We've got the cands to be white, I know, we might have to just read this out because I'm guessing that there's some pointing or something.
Yeah.
Where's the plan for it?
It's remedial. Time is a, this is a, this is kitchen.
Right. What are you saying? It's consulting neighbours. There's no alterations to the listed building. There's no demolition of the building. Uh, materials are within the keeping of the building, has significant immunity from listing been sought? No. Proved remedial works. The car park associated with the white line soon to be converted to offices up, uh, which is all done on planning. Do, 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 uh, occupy an area, the west gate public car park, they access it through the public car park at the back where the, where the, where the rest is. Owned by Rockhampton County Council, who leased the area allocated from the white line.
Yeah.
Right, the car park ground, the wall built in red brick, to which the application applies, is also the ownership of Rockhampton County Council. But legally it's responsible to the owner of the white line to maintain it, so they've got to maintain it. The wall also forms a rear boundary to a number of listed properties on Melton Road, these being numbers eighteen to twenty-six. It is clear that the wall has been neglected and somewhat over the years, and program of remedial works are now required from that, any further deterioration. It should be noted in recent weeks that door gates have been installed in the wall to the rear of one of the properties on Melton Road. This work was carried out with any consultation with the new owner of the white line or to any knowledge of RRCC. The door gate, the door and gate can be seen in photograph one. So there's a photograph there showing a blue door in a wall.
Yeah.
It looks like it did in the nineteen twenties, but it's not ours, it's ours to be. Um, so the remedial work up and over is followed, the reduction, a reduction in height of approximately four hundred and fifty mil, that's eighteen inches. To create a uniform level top and remove damage from loose bricks. Okay? The installation of new capping along the length of the wall, this is to prevent further damage and weathering. And repointing of the wall, car park side, prevent further deterioration of existing jobs. So reduce the wall by eighteen inches, new capping and repointing. Any comments or observations?
Well, I'm opposed.
It all sounds perfectly acceptable to me, and that, in fact, by reducing down the height of the wall, which is probably built fifty to, well, one hundred years ago, it'll probably make it more stable. So council's thought this initiative as it will actually help to recreate the authority. That'll be the comments that go back, proposed by councillor Lucas, sent in by Paul, all those in favour?
I had a question before.
Shoot, yeah.
I'm presuming that this remedial, this work they're proposing doesn't now affect the door that has been put in by.
No.
No, because I couldn't see that, I'm looking at it, but.
But then when you have the gate.
Because it's.
If I, if I pass that picture on, you'll see that where's, where, where the capping is above the gate. It goes above the gate and awesome, then it goes up. So what it is, the bit that goes up, you want to take that down, so it actually becomes level with the piece of top.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that, uh, from, we, we don't suspect that that will now cause an issue.
No.
That can take into that one.
Shouldn't, well, no, well, the, well, the gate is a separate issue, that's not what we're considering. So that's right, it's up to the owner of the white line and RRCC now to challenge whether it's okay to. Our consideration was reducing the height and the capping. And that's, and that's our limit of concern on this application.
Okay.
Yeah? We can put a caveat, Anne, that, um, RRCC going to, um, check the integrity of the wall where the gates have been installed.
I'll get, yeah.
So are you happy for us, there's an amendment, I couldn't give it, Anne, well, are you happy that the amendment is that the town council accepted the works that needed and appropriate? And that the, our county council are going to make sure that the integrity of the wall is not challenged because of the inefficient gate. Anne, what do you want to add?
I was just going to say, when it's all blown down, how much brick is there of the, the gate when it's?
At the moment, there are approximately at least ten brick courses.
And that's not coming down?
That's not coming down.
That's fine.
Okay, so that's proposed by Joyce then, seconded by Paul, all those in favour? That's unanimous as well then.
Tree.
Tree, remove all those branches, Joyce, would you like to?
Actually, I have, I have no information about this tree. Uh, so I don't know.
We've got any information on it?
Remove those branches. One, no, goat widow, overhanging field.
Okay.
Chairman, I rely on that tree warden for standard growth because it's quite a precious area, so I don't know if we should defer.
Filled with trees, yeah. Can you make any comment?
The only comment I have to just look at is that it's, it's not always three, it's saying, they're looking after the tree. Uh, on lower branches.
So it's up to the field.
It is only, yeah, to point out, it is only the removal of lowest branch, but in fact it says remove the lowest branch, so that's the.
Is that the husband's daughter, because it's overhanging that guard and they have the right to do one of these taken back?
Well, it's overhanging field T what, so it's overhanging field.
It's overhanging.
Well, I'll have the picture, it's overhanging, it's the others.
Okay, so.
I would say.
Okay, well, if it's only the removal of the lower branch, and it's hopefully going to keep the integrity of the tree, as we know the tree.
Yes, absolutely.
So, uh, tree warden on the initial contract, it feels that there is no issue and the council are happy there, but Joyce is proposing that, that the branch is removed. Anybody want to second that? Martin, all those in favour? Um, that's six in favour. Um, that's six in favour, against and one abstention.
Chairman, can I just point out for the new member that a PTA means that you can't just chop off anything willy-nilly?
No.
It's that's why it's not, yeah, that's why it has, that's why it's come to council. So if the neighbour did cut it off, they would then be prosecuted.
Yeah. Okay, right, um. All right, item five, Mr Patel, single story rear extension of West Road dental practice. Um, I'm going to apologize and declare a late protest.
It is not my dentist, so I'm not
So they're obviously extending because they obviously feel that they, you know, maybe they're they're not in the world, aren't they? Any comments? The computer's still not working, is it?
It's still not updated.
Well, I want to look at that. There's more pictures here. So this is the the rear property. What's it called? Single story rear extension. So they're putting literally a single story extension on the back. So that means they're building out.
When does that back onto it?
It backs off, yeah, it backs onto nothing. It's it backs onto their own land. And also it doesn't go onto a neighbour's boundary, but it is because it will be below a certain height, that was not a planning issue. So I'll passes round that way. Okay.
So you may not be clearly aware, because we have a lot, plenty of energy, that we did have some objections from neighbours there.
What are their objections?
Uh, from a Mrs Wood, I object on the grounds of parking. We have a problem which the council are looking at and referenced parking on West Road. Patients of the dentist and all staff can't park outside resident homes all day long. So residents have nowhere to park.
She gave a she gave a number, a a number of house. And now I'm just trying to page her, I'm sorry. But yes, she's right.
She is right.
And there are others, so I didn't specifically Um, okay, is there anything else, Nick?
Yeah, hang on. She was eighty-five, I was going.
Eight-five.
Um, this is Susan Brown.
She's about six or seven years old.
Um, so she's eighty-one with the amount of car parking, similar theme. Um. Um, and Kristy Smith.
Oh.
And Kristy Smith, who is seventy-one, Metro.
She's seventy-one, that's true.
Uh, maybe I'm just reading it too quick, so you're going to text. Yeah, sorry, I apologize. She hasn't said her dress. Um. She's included photographs.
Do those plants actually go over the parking?
No, that's what I was going to say.
And do they lose any cars?
They're not losing any cars.
She's seventy-three, West Road.
So that's that's the 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 actual building work is actually in the rear garden area and so it doesn't seem to impact on the car parking. And West Road, in fact, most of us have been up there, will know that apartment there is always
It's horrible, yeah.
On saying that, whenever I go, so I can speak from experience, that whenever I've been with a dentist, I don't ever seem to have an issue parking. Um, and to a certain extent, I I also tend the option to call in and co-op when I'm there.
Oh, so you park there?
So I might park there, but I was personally from co-op. And take a slide thirty minutes.
So I have this like plan.
Um, I don't think the parking can be a consideration on this application.
I don't, I don't want residents parking all around.
It was the thing that, at the end of the day, that's what the county council decide whether they make it no parking at all. If it says there that residents parking only, county council can put those signs up. If they've got it on residents parking, but you can park there for one hour, no return within two hours.
Yeah.
Then that means that people are clearly allowed to park. And also, parking on the street is, on this case, I do not believe is lawfully reasonable to object to this party application.
Well, it's amazing that depending where these houses are, who gets permanent residents and only and only people that, you know.
Outside of the remit list.
Well, I'm sorry, but it makes me sick.
So it's a single story, so it's not going to do all that light blinding. It's not going to overlook a property. There's any single story. From what I saw there, it's going to be built out of a similar brick and down there it's just red engineering brick. At the moment, I personally can't see any objection, however, I would be abstaining from the vote anyway. So looking for any comments from the rest of the table.
Which, if they're building out and going to hit it up for a plan, there's more houses going further along um, West Road, it's
Whiteout Town.
No, yeah, that's what I'm saying. They want more down the services anyway.
No.
Yes. I'm getting one.
That is the town.
Anyway, we're not here to discuss more or less.
This has seen a whirlwind.
So
I have no issue with that.
All right, okay. So looking for me, so I would propose that the council are not objecting and that maybe the council, caveat will be that the county council should review the restriction for resident parking over there.
Yes, I sympathize with residents.
Exactly. So you don't have to be able to, Michael?
I don't know. I don't think that's, I don't think that's
No, well, okay.
Have to do with this one.
No, that's fine. Okay, so Michael has proposed that the the item is considered as the council has no objection under building regulations to stop this. So remember, this is the building regulations, you know.
But so doesn't, if this is a commercial property, say you have to reflect on that
Absolutely.
impact of extending a
Yes, but Michael does have a happy caveat.
We can.
Do they want to second what?
We can, we can put in, this is our role as a town council to support residents. And my view is if the residents have a problem with parking, we may not think ourselves that. So what I would make a caveat put there
Michael doesn't want a caveat? Listen.
Yes, and I'm saying
Listen, right, stop, listen for once. Councillor Hayley said that he is proposing the council go to head. I'm looking for a second. If it doesn't get seconded, then somebody else chirp up and put another one on the table. Does somebody want a second? Councillor Hayley's proposal. Thank you.
And that's what I want to caveat.
All those in favour of that proposal? One, two, one, two, three, right, three, four, how many and against? One, two, three against. Now I've got to abstain as chairman because I'm I'm I think so. It doesn't go through then.
We can propose, because we're only supposed to be commenting, we're not just making planning decisions. We could make a proposal again and 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 ask for the residents' concerns to be considered. We don't have to say if it's right or wrong.
We already, look, council regulations, we've had a proposal on the table. We deal with the proposal.
And we can add to that.
Well, no, it is, I'll have to make that one then, that that proposal must fall then. So I will have to use my vote. Um, I can't support it because that would be inappropriate, so it will have to fall. So I'm looking, anybody else wants to make a proposal with a caveat? Anne?
That the 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 make that area outside the, they have to do the words for me, that they make it residence-only parking because
Alison, you've got that, haven't you? The 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 application goes ahead, but the the county council will review the residents' parking down there. So that's a proposal by Anne, seconded by Nick. All those in favour? One, two, three, four, all those against? All those abstaining, three, so that counts. Thank you. Thanks for listening.
That's our job.
Thank you. So let's deal with each item as covered. That's not forgetful because right, uh, six is Mr Allen. I've been, I've heard some horrific language in here tonight.
Before the meeting, I
Six, Mr Allen proposed thought to replacement of flat roof to pitch over garage. Eighteen seventy-eight. Proposed thought to replacement of flat roof.
Are there any objections?
Existing is a flat roof proposed, where it's got a lot of sloping, yeah, roof. It's really is better. It's an incremental improvement, in my opinion. Any comments or observations? Joyce, are you going to give us a bit? I know you're off the boat. No, okay, now you're on this passing round.
No, please. Just sort of look at the
Which is that or the one? Is it the one?
No, that was at a previous
It looks, it looks like an improvement to me. Makes it attractive. Anybody got any observations or comments? Reminds me of what you're proposing. Brilliant, is that a proposal?
Yes.
Proposal is brilliant. Obviously that could improve your RCC. So, yeah, proposal by Anne that with no objection, the county council looks like they've lived past the area.
Absolutely.
Uh, that will be seconded by councillor Hayley, Michael. All in favour? Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six and one abstention. Thank you. Thirty-three time road, I live here in the nineteen eighties, I'm not staying, anyway. Uh, single story porch extension. Thirty-three time road, single story porch extension. I'm not sure why porch is becoming a panic.
Absolutely.
I thought that it would be lower certain percentage of the building.
Yes, it must be. Such a change of law. And I thought
Yeah, true.
Either side of this thirty, whatever.
Three.
Three, either side has got a similar
Same fault, you're wrong.
Yeah.
I don't understand it, Adam, because when we went to that
Looks better.
planning training, they did discuss committed development and showed us what people to get away with.
So we've got no porch and then a porch.
Yeah.
And it's only coming out one point six metres, that's eight, that's six foot. And it's only four point two metres long. And it's got a downstairs toilet in it and a small portrait.
I propose that
Any other comments around doing that? First look at this, Nick? No, I'm I'm Right, so we propose by Anne that there's no objections and it once again looks like an enhancement to the building.
Yeah.
Seconded by Joyce, Lucas, all those in favour? Unanimous? Thank you. Uh, number eight. Mister Smith, change of usual at each warehouse to give mineral external, most from mineral, new glasses. Minor external alterations to building. This is unique one thing, so this is a change of use. Any comments or ideas firstly then? Any issues? Any other comments or questions? Change of use is where we want to be incurred in business, so yeah, anybody want to propose that we would, the council has no objections, so by, proposed by Joyce, seconded by Michael. All those in favour? Nick?
I just wanted to check there wasn't any objections from neighbours.
Yeah, that's fine. It would be all, it would be unanimous what to be here for me. Yeah. Better than It's going to be coming in just like that, in fact, with all that working out.
And then we sorry, the sorry, chairman.
Number nine is facial.
It's a sign, so
Yeah. Right, so
Interesting.
Yeah. So number nine is Mr Smith again. He's having new facial put on the the actual building. It does not appear to be illuminated, it's just a flat.
Yeah.
Just replacing, so
I propose that
Proposed by Anne, seconded by Paul. All those in favour? Unanimous, yes, thank you. Ten.
I'm going to get this tree, boys.
Number one. Number one, no, one number.
It's one pisar pellon tree. And a pisar plum tree is an ornamental, descriptuous cherry plum. And if you want to know more, that area used to be the orchard to Katniss House.
Okay, says he removed that pisar plum tree.
Uh, it's
Because it's in poor health.
It's in a poor shape.
It's not, um
No.
And then the other one is
Snake bark.
Wow.
One snake bark maple, reduce the height, and that is quite acceptable. And it's lateral branches because she tried to keep that into some sort of shape.
Okay, any other comments or observations? I I went with the initiative, tree warden supports this application. Uh, one tree gone out because it's in poor health.
Can I just say, I've just got it wrong. It is an orchard, but it wasn't attached. Did I say it was attached to Katniss?
No.
Katniss House, no. It was an orchard, but it wasn't attached to Katniss House, this one.
Okay, so tree warden's happy with this. Any other comments or observations? Otherwise I'll take it. It's a proposal from the tree warden.